Thank you very much for joining us tonight at our city council. I don't know, actually it's town hall meeting. I don't know if it's a city council town hall meeting or not, but it's a town hall meeting. And we thought it was a good idea. We had an opportunity to have our, the company that we've selected come and talk to us about rebranding, some of their ideas and stuff. And so we're going to be turning the time over to them in a few minutes to discuss things. And then we'll see how long that takes. We're going to give them, we've got until seven o'clock tonight. And we want to get to some questions and some comments that we have had a few people sign up for tonight. And so with that, oh, a couple of other things I probably should tell you. We will be, they will, I say we, I mean them, they will be holding an open house for a rebranding at our, at the Marshall Public Library. That will be Friday, March 8th from four to six P M. I would encourage you, if you, your friends aren't here, if you know somebody that might want to make some comments, maybe just let them know when these dates are and where they're going to be. March 8th from four to six P M. at the Marshall Public Library. We'll be looking for some community input. We will also be at Franklin Middle School Saturday, March 9th from 10 A M. or from eight A M. to 10 A M. I'll just give you a little warning, there will be a bunch of little basketball players running around also. And so we think there will be a lot of people that will be in and out of Franklin Middle School, but we would encourage you also to invite your friends to go to that as well. And then we will be the rebranding crew at, at the Elks Lodge, March 9th from one P M. to two thirty P M. as well. And so we're looking forward to seeing and getting some community input and seeing what this rebranding looks like as we move forward. With that, I'm going to turn the time over to Jen and Brian. I'll let them introduce themselves and then let, just turn the time over to them. They'll, they'll have whatever they need and then we'll go from there. So, thank you. What? You know, I debated, do I always, do I usually have a roll call or not? Let's do it. Let's do it. Yes ma'am, please.
Tatum.
Rick.
Tatum.
He's muted.
Rick?
Can you hear?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, here.
Here.
Mansfield, Nichols.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Vlad.
Here. I might just add Mansfield would be here, but he is in the middle of, he and his wife having their first baby, probably as we speak, so he's got an excuse to not be here. It's a weak one, but nonetheless, it's an excuse. That's not really true. Anyway, the weak part. Jen and Brian, I'll turn the time over to you so you can introduce yourselves, kind of a little bit about your company and yourself. And then tell, talk to us about what the rebranding is, why it's important, and then kind of your, your steps forward.
Great. Excellent. Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. My name is Jen Gibbard. I'm the Director of Creative Development for Hub.
And I'm Brian Guinecosa-Brooks. I'm a creative strategist.
So we're leading this rebranding effort. I have a presentation we're going to walk through. This is one of the more formal settings we've been in a little while. So our approach is very conversational. The whole goal is to get you guys talking and thinking about what your city means to you. My computer keeps going to sleep. As we go through this, but without further ado, let's see if I can step through this. Okay, so we're Hub Collective. We're a branding and strategy team based out of Portland, Oregon. We've been doing this for almost 20 years now. We have a small and nimble team of eight people, half designers, half strategists, that work collaboratively together on projects like these. And we wanted to kind of start off with just an introduction to what branding is. And so at its most basic form, a brand is a visual and conceptual system that represents the identity of a person, a place, or a thing. And that's a great opportunity to say that a brand is more than just a logo. The logo tends to be like the signature piece, and that's what everybody thinks about when they think about a brand, but a good brand is a whole orchestrated system of components. And what's the big deal about branding? Like, is it really a necessary thing? What is it? Well, for us, what we think is that branding really is all about recognition. And when I say recognition, I'm talking about two different types of recognition. One is the identification, like, oh, look, I know what that is. And the second, when it comes to the city and all that the city does in the services, it's the other sort of recognition in that we want people to know what the city is doing for them. So having a cohesive brand and a brand that is placed on all the different services and providers and all the different departments gives the city that recognition, like, hey, this is an official city program, department, whatever it is. So, when it comes to visual recognition, I've put, and I am at the mercy of your color balancing on your projectors here, but I put some colors up on the screen. Does anybody know why I chose these three colorways? Nobody?
Eyes.
Easy on the eyes, okay.
Do they look familiar in any sort of way?
As a theme? Good idea. What if I add these two colors? Oh.
We know those colors.
Know those colors? Yeah. So color is a way to communicate a brand in and of itself. You get to a point where you're like, oh, I know those colors. That's my high school. That's the rival high school. That's our local university. There is brand recognition in the colors. And then also in a brand is the font, the type that you use and the way that it represents. Now, I've used three very popular types here to represent Pocatello, which are Coca-Cola, Google, Lego. The type that you use and using it consistently also conveys recognition. And then we have those containers, those logo marks, those things that you often think of as a brand. And you don't even need the brand name on there to recognize. Does anybody know any of the ones on the screen?
H P Levi and Microsoft.
There we go. So it really is a way to foster that instant recognition, and that's really what a strong brand system that is well-applied can do for you. So, starting from the basics, how do we make a brand for Pocatello? Well, it's really not about gimmicks. Gimmicks come and go, and you want your brand to last. But what it is about is discovering and defining what's already there, what's great about your city, understanding where there may be a gap between the perception and the reality, and lining those two things strongly. And then, once you have that foundational understanding, it's taking that understanding and figuring out how to amplify it so that you're not just shouting about everything, but you're elevating those pieces that really are unique and signature to your city in your brand and the way that you represent your city going forward. So for us, that means making a brand that is derived from your culture, your history, your sense of place here, that promotes and celebrates what makes Pocatello unique, that raises awareness around all that the city does and offers, and that fosters a sense of community pride and welcoming that you guys have here in the city. And that's where you come in and where this visit comes in. We start every project, so we are at the very start of our project, getting to know you, your city, and what makes you unique. Now, we're from out of town, so we get the, the treat, I guess is the best word I can come up with, to get to know you for the first time. So we're coming in, we're seeing everything for the first time, we're dining, we're meeting with people, we're hearing things that you guys may take for granted that we won't because we don't know it already. So that's really what is integral to this visit, is getting an understanding from you guys, what you have, what you want to celebrate, and all that makes you unique. I just said that. So we're here, we want to hang out where the locals hang out, we want to grab lunch at the place where you guys all grab lunch. We want to know what you guys show off to visitors when they come on, come in from out of town. What's a must-do, must-see? So all of those things help us go back to our team that's waiting anxiously to hear about Pocatello and tell them what it's like here so that we can come up with a brand that when we do bring it back, everyone goes, oh yeah, I see what you did there. That's kind of cool.
Yeah. And one of, really what we're trying to do over the next few days while we're here is cast as wide a net as possible, ask as many questions in as many different ways as possible so that we can hear every possible point of view and angle about what makes Pocatello special, what do you like, what do you hate, what's really important? Because then, once, if we capture all of it now, then we can go back and say, start to sift through and say, okay, what did we hear over and over again? What's really rising to the top in importance? And we'll go back and we'll say, all right, these are the things that we really heard that are really significant for you. They came up over and over again, or they came up in different ways and different contexts. And so there's something foundational about these things that they help embody the identity of Pocatello. And they were going to take those things and say, how do we make a brand out of that? Because right now, you have a logo, it's pretty old, it's not, not a lot of use is getting out of it. You have a new flag, and of course, you're leaning on your flag to do a lot of stuff that a flag is not meant to do because you have, it's the only thing you have, right? Instead, we're going to say, okay, here's what we heard as a foundational thing. We need to represent these concepts or these attributes or these characteristics. How do we build a brand out of that? Thinking about a logo as a starting point, but then to Jen's point, thinking about colors, type, textures, illustration, how those things can be cohesively applied in a way that builds that strong brand identity. And as we get into the process, and it'll probably be about a six-month process, you know, towards the end, we'll start to get into some of the nitpicky things like, okay, how do we actually apply this brand to all the things that a brand gets applied to? How do we prioritize what we put it on first and what do we wait, you know, to add it to until something either wears out or needs to get reused or needs to get replaced? So that we're thinking, you know, economically about how we're going to do it. And so all of that is going to come down the road. But right now, we're really trying to start as big as possible to say, tell us everything about Pocatello. And we'll go back and start to sift through and see what was really important about that.
So at this point, anybody have any questions about the process, the journey that we're embarking on?
Is there a timeline?
Is there a timeline? There is a big-picture timeline. It goes through several phases, but it will be, you know, four to six months timeline. Yep. Yes.
So in addition to the town hall meetings, what other avenues are you going to glean information?
Yeah, so we, we have a series of public meetings. We're meeting individually with each of the council members. We are meeting with city leadership. We met with the police chief today. We're going over to ISU on Thursday. We're meeting with the Chamber, the downtown business, historical downtown. And then there's one other group meeting that is slipping my mind right now.
Realtors.
The Realtors. Thank you. Good job. And then in addition to that, like, we said earlier, we're going to the basketball tournament, and we're going to the start of Brew Fest. So we will be out and about.
Yeah. And we always also realize that at the end of these sorts of intensive visits, we're inevitably going to overlook someone's point of view or an important voice, and we're going to go back and say, okay, who did we not hear? Why? Is there a way that we can capture that information moving forward? So it's not like it's a one-and-done thing, like, if we're only talking to people now and we can never talk to them again. It's like, no, we can find ways to get back in touch with people as things move forward if we miss people.
Out of the group that you just named, I would suggest meeting with the school board also.
Oh, that's a good idea.
To hear about what, what their point of view is on the city.
Any other questions?
All right.
Okay. So, let's get into some details. We tend to take a less traditional way of surfacing information, so we're going to start with that. So we're starting to kind of go with a who is Pocatello, A B test. So, raise your hand if you would describe Pocatello as casual or formal. So I'm going to go with casual. Hands up. Whoa, okay, I've got unanimous.
Seems to be the majority. Any, any for formal?
Anybody want to make a case?
Occasionally, we have some nice events where we get to a formal, but.
But it feels special. Yeah. All right, fair enough. Established versus up and coming. All right. Can I get hands raised for established? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
That's a hard one.
It is a hard one.
That's where we are now, but we want to be.
Want to be up and coming.
Can we raise our hand for both?
For both, can we?
No. But honestly, it's less about the answers and more about the looks on the faces and how confidently people raise their hands. So it's fair, you can kind of do, I guess you could do a little pokey pokey, turn yourself, but you'd have to turn yourself around. I'll make you do the whole dance. All right. Slow-paced, fast-paced. Hands for slow-paced. Oh, gonna go unanimous again. Anybody making a case for fast-paced life here in Pocatello?
Is there any aspect of life that is fast-paced?
My schedule.
Corey's schedule.
Yeah, I'm with you on that one.
Yeah.
I mean, we're busy.
Busy.
But I don't know that the pace of the place would be fast-paced.
Yeah.
But lots of people are very busy, so.
Yeah, I should have put a busy on there.
That's good.
All right. Fun, serious. Give me a fun.
It's a blast.
Ooh, oh, all right. Serious. Some abstaining. This wasn't quite as unanimous as casual. Okay. So then I have some silly ones in here. Are you the mom or are you the fun uncle? Moms, raise your hands. Okay. Got a few.
Notice the moms all rose their hands.
They're, they're following the rules. Fun uncles. Yeah? All right. Good. Excellent. Are you meat and potatoes or a little bit of sushi sashimi? Let's see a hand for meat and potatoes. Ooh, very much so. Yeah? Anybody going to advocate for sushi?
I actually would advocate.
Not as a city.
As the city, yeah?
All right. What, what makes you think the city is a sashimi sushi combo?
Lot of diversity.
Lot of diversity.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right.
I think we were voting more on what we like.
That's exactly.
And that tells us something about you too.
Yes, right. We're foodie town. All right. Are we going Charles Dickens?
No.
J K Rowling? Charles Dickens, hands up? Ooh, oh, an audible groan. Yeah? All right, who's, who's team J K Rowling? Yeah? Why? Anybody want to advocate for one or the other?
Adventure?
Adventure, yes.
Yeah, fun.
Fun.
Dickens is too heavy and negative.
Steer kind of railroad vibe with Dickens.
Oh, okay. All right. I like that. Yeah? Austere railroad?
Hidden treasures here.
Hidden treasures. Ooh, I love that.
It's kind of magical in some ways.
Kind of magical in some ways. Okay. Are we, I mean, I gotta end with it, right? If we're going fun, are we, are we Taylor Swift or are we a little bit of Beyonce? We're going to pick the two top grossing tours of the summer.
I definitely need two hands for this one.
Oh, we're going two hands.
That's right.
We, we got some of both.
Got some of both. What characteristics?
Neither.
Neither? Ooh. I'm going to wheel back and let you two find it out.
She and the parking lot.
I'm going out the back.
Is there a third that we feel would be more appropriate?
Ooh, that's a good question.
Metallica.
Metallica?
I got a Metallica, but I was thinking George Strait.
George Strait, okay.
But in my opinion, they're both kind of like overrated, and I don't see Pocatello as being overrated.
Yes.
What a great answer.
Excellent. That's a great answer.
I love that.
That's excellent. Anybody else have some insights? We need a country singer.
Yeah.
Any name rise to the top?
Dwight Yoakam.
Dwight Yoakam?
We done.
Yeah.
There's younger ones, but I like him.
We got some hard rockers too here.
Yeah, we got some hard rockers.
Country and rock concerts.
Yep. You're a start early, go late sort of crowd? No?
Some of us.
Some.
Some, all right.
I personally see the two of them as too done-up and too much makeup, too pompous, too flashy.
Flashy, yeah.
Personal things coming out here.
Absolutely. A lot of that plays at my house and I don't like it. So, when I, when I really think about Pocatello, I kind of see some Luke Combs a little bit, somewhat of an outlaw kind of attitude, but still like, really got a tradition behind it. Youthful, but also still kind of serious.
How does that sound to everybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah? Excellent.
When you were describing that.
See, there we go.
Can I throw a little reggaeton in there?
Yeah.
Because we do, I mean, maybe, I'm thinking the surrounding area, we have a large Latino population, so I'm thinking there's, you know, another vibe that could be part of that, but I think Corey's spot on.
Yeah. So the thing that I love about that is if you like kind of abstract it a little bit and you think about lesser-known but great listening and, you know, really worth investing and learning about, maybe not the one that's on the radio all the time, center stage, but great musicians.
The hidden gem idea, we hear that about Pocatello all the time. And so I think musically, the hidden gems, you know, and Taylor Swift and Beyonce, I would agree are not the hidden gems.
Not at all. I love it that it was Taylor Swift and Beyonce that pulled you guys out and got to talk. I'm going to count that for a win.
That's on my Alexa all the time, but that's not Pocatello.
There we go. Love that.
I like them, but yeah.
Yeah. No, that's perfect. All right. So, moving on, we want to talk about a sense of place. And so when we think about this, we want to, I want you to kind of frame it up and say, when, how do you know when you've arrived in Pocatello? What sensory clues do you look for? Is there a building? Is there a road? Is there something else?
Is there a smell or a sound?
Ooh.
Construction.
That we want to be known for.
Yeah.
Well, and we're going to, I'm going to ask some questions, and we're going to make Brian do a visual map of your town based on your guidance here in a minute, but I just want to plant some seeds. And then also, when you think about there being a center, what is it? Where is it? And if you think of there being a heart, what is it? Where is it? Now, you want me to just tee this up?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to do, you are going to tell Brian how to draw a map of Pocatello.
Jeez.
Okay? We arrived here at around one o'clock this afternoon. We came right to City Hall, went to our hotel room, came back to City Hall. We have not seen town.
Did you fly in or drive in?
We flew in.
Flew in.
Yep. So, our knowledge is relatively limited, so.
And it was snowing, so there was low visibility.
Yeah. Okay. So, just because you're not microphoned up, where are we starting? What, what way are we approaching the city? Somebody's got to get it started.
I'm going to say south, south of town. From the south.
From the south.
Start from the, start from the south then, okay?
Starting south down here?
Sure.
All right. What's the first thing I should put on this map?
Gap.
Is that just like a star?
To, to, where the mountains come together.
You have to come through the gap in the mountains.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. What's the next thing I should put on this map?
Railroad tracks.
The railroad tracks.
Okay. Where are they going?
All the way north.
All the way clear north, yeah.
Go like this?
Yep.
Yep.
Railroad tracks.
All right. What's the next thing I should put on here?
River.
River. All right. What am I doing with the river?
Right next to river, correct.
It's going to follow the railroad tracks. To the left.
On this side?
Yeah.
It's a little windier, but it's parallel.
Like this?
Yeah.
Then it's going to straighten out for a long time.
Yeah, it straightens out for a long time, yeah.
In the channel.
I would say, I heard Century out there, Century High School, that's right by the gap.
On the right side.
On the right side by the gap.
After you come through, yeah.
How would I recognize that it's a high school? Is it right on the road?
It's a big building.
It's the biggest building.
You've got, you would recognize it, I think, because of the football field and the baseball field and stuff like that.
And it very clearly says Century High School.
Got it.
On the building.
What's the next thing I should do?
Drive up Meek Creek, man.
Take a detour.
Nordic Center up there.
So on the left side of the sheet is mountains.
Yeah. You have the benches.
Mountains like?
Clear left, clear left mountains.
Like a very edge?
Yeah.
Basically that whole.
All the way down.
Just going up and down like this?
Yep.
Yep. Got some weird mountains going on.
I like them. I would say, I would say as you're coming into town, you pass ISU, I don't say university on the left.
What?
Well, you have the freeway that goes through it.
Am I on the freeway?
Yeah, you're on the freeway.
I'm on the freeway.
Okay, so let's get the freeway on there. River.
Stevens Performing Arts.
Railroad. Freeway.
It goes parallel too, but on that side.
It kind of angles, angles up a little bit to your right.
Yeah.
Not much.
Yeah.
Railroad. Freeway.
It goes parallel too, but on that side.
It kind of angles, angles up a little bit to your right.
Yeah.
Not much.
Yeah.
Not that much, but yeah.
Little bit.
That'll work. I know.
And this is, is this I-15?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, Performing Arts Center.
Yeah. I guess she's Performing Arts Center.
Okay, so I heard ISU, part of that's the Performing Arts Center and then the hospital.
All right there.
So.
ISU's on the.
So on the left side of the freeway would be ISU about, yeah, about that high.
Here?
Yeah.
How do I, how do I know that it's ISU? What do I see?
You see the Performing Arts Center.
You see, yeah, the ICCU Dome and the Performing Arts Center.
And you see a big water tank that now has images of ISU on it.
On the other side of the freeway, you have the big hospital.
Yeah.
Right across the freeway?
Yeah, it's close enough, probably.
Yeah.
What?
What's the connector?
You could put the South Valley Connector, but I don't, yeah.
It crosses over the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
As a bridge.
Oh, a bridge over the railroad tracks.
It's a.
But it's one of a few.
One of.
One of a few.
Yeah.
It's down towards the south.
Good luck with that.
Right here? Just goes over like.
And everyone calls it the connector? Is it officially called the connector?
It's the South Valley Connector.
South Valley Connector is what it's called.
Yeah. Our whole town is split by the railroad, so everything is east and west.
So you got these three, like, you got mountains over here, I heard someone say mountains over there.
We got mountains on that side?
Yeah.
We really are just in the base of.
In the.
All the mountains.
It does, but it opens up just like that going out into the north.
The lava cliffs. Where are we putting the lava cliffs?
Just. That's right. Yeah, right there.
Are they on, the cliffs on the river?
They're basalt cliffs.
We can say yes, they're on the river, but.
It's called Black Rock.
And right past the river there, you have Ross Park though, that's a big.
Ross Park.
Just to the north of the, of the connector and the, and the.
Right here?
No, on the other side of the river.
On this side?
Yeah.
We're putting a lot in between those railroad tracks.
Of course.
I know, we made that, they were pretty narrow.
The Union Pacific Old Smoke Stack.
Ooh, Union Pacific Old Smoke Stack.
About in the middle of the page.
Yeah.
Iconic.
Yep.
Middle of the page.
Yeah, right.
Right here?
Yeah.
To the left of the railroad, but.
Yeah, right there.
Right there. You'll see it tomorrow when you walk in.
Excellent, yeah. When we walk in here?
Yeah, it's right across the street from City Hall.
I heard golf courses in the back. Where do we put our golf courses?
Also by the connector.
Yeah, also right there.
Notice the pattern here?
On the, but they're on the left side of the river.
On this side?
Yeah, so we're.
We haven't even really gotten you into town yet.
I was gonna say, this process is gonna take a long time.
I know.
Then you have another golf course on the right side of the freeway up, about three quarters of the way up the, yeah.
Here?
Yeah.
Funny weird golf course.
Looks great, Brian, you're doing great.
It's like an amoeba.
Oh no, he always has to do it.
Yep, to the right of the.
Which side of the?
On the right.
On the side?
Yeah.
Back here?
Yeah, on the hill.
That's very iconic, but also new. And the Mac Center.
The Wellness Complex, we just heard the Wellness Complex, see, where's the golf course there? So, it's on the same size of the freeway too, darn it. Just north, we have a wellness complex right there with an amphitheater.
Yep.
Alright.
Roughly about the same size as that golf course?
Yeah, it's a, it's a park and amphitheater.
A lake for fishing.
Yeah, it's an urban fish pond.
Right? Best.
Yeah, we're on the right hand side, we're still on the east side, we're gonna come back.
Oh, we're doing a loop.
Well, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, that's fair, yeah.
That's what it looks like.
I follow, I follow now.
We need to put the other highway, 80.
The other highway.
So we've got 86.
Yep.
The one you came in on.
Oh, good job.
Kevin even, I was like, I don't.
It goes across the top.
Yeah, let's go up that high.
She's had to apologize for that twice now, and we've only been here for five hours.
There you go, I-86.
Okay.
Okay, what did you want in the middle? What did you want to fill in in the middle?
I feel like we missed downtown Pocatello.
Downtown, so our downtown area?
That's our center.
What should we, what should we draw to represent downtown? Should we draw like a grid of streets? Should we draw a building? Should we draw?
How do you know you've got downtown?
Yeah. Okay.
The Paris.
Historic buildings.
You go under the underpass.
Story downtown?
Historic.
Oh, historic, yes, okay, great.
And unfortunately, it's right between the railroad tracks and the river. Right there, yeah.
Is it right here?
Okay.
Up further?
I'll get that next.
Right here?
A little further down. You had it right the first time, that gives you more room.
There's a whole series of restored, really cool neon signs, which we are known across the country for our neon signs.
Neon signs and a martini glass, that's, I heard, the bars are there and the historic signs.
So what I'm hearing is, there's neon, there's bars, there's restored buildings.
Lookout Point Park.
Lookout Point Park.
Is that downtown too?
Yeah, that's our center of historic downtown.
Pocatello High School.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a little bit above is Pocatello High School.
Yeah, Pocatello High School.
Directly north.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's downtown.
It's all right, yeah, it's all right there.
And then there's a warehouse district?
Yes.
Yes.
Which is on the other side of the train tracks, you said? Okay.
But all.
But all right here.
But all right here. A little clump of warehouses on the other side of the tracks from downtown.
Yes.
Yes.
One of our goals is to connect through the warehouse district, to connect ISU to historic downtown through the warehouse district.
Okay, so it is in between ISU and the downtown.
Downtown area, yeah.
Okay, and what is in that district currently?
There's some restaurants, there's some bars, breweries.
Warehouse buildings that we have that can repurpose.
The Museum of Clean.
Museum of Clean. If you had to describe it, can you use an adjective? Is it?
Warehouse.
Funky, musty, crazy, conservative? Up and coming?
Yeah.
Up and coming, okay.
Because it's kind of cool. I mean, it's warehouse-y.
Eclectic.
I went green, I don't know. I just got distracted. It's eclectic. Alright, so, in the sense of, oh, how are we doing? We're doing okay on time. Do we have all the landmarks?
No.
No. What's that?
Simplot, that.
Oh, Simplot.
That would be on the northwest side, by 86 where you came in.
Way up in that.
Right up there, that, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's true.
It's in Power County.
Do you want it to be within the city limits or?
Not necessarily, I mean, if you guys, if it's associated.
Simplot's part of who we are.
Yeah.
So before we, before you hit the gap, we have a ski area.
Yeah, we didn't talk about it.
Oh, Pebble.
Got Pebble Creek.
Pebbles?
Pebble Creek Ski Resort.
Yep.
That's on the other side of the gap, yeah. South of the gap. That's right, good, good get.
And if we're naming Simplot, what about on, on an LA semiconductor?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we do have a lot of green ray trails out there too.
Green, are they, are they in one particular part of the city or all throughout?
They go all around.
All throughout.
And the goal is to link them all.
Excellent, okay. Goal as in five years out, 10 years out, or a hope and a dream?
More than a hope and a dream, I think.
Yeah? Okay. Excellent.
A lot of work's been done.
Yeah.
That's right, Edson Fitcher.
Nature.
Yeah.
Area.
Nature area.
That is, that is, your golf course on the south is just, there you go, below that.
Right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Other landmarks? City Hall.
I don't either.
Costco.
Yes.
You have a Costco.
Do you know, we have the.
Oh, what about our, what about the Titan Center?
The Titan Center is.
Titan Center.
It's our old Bursarys Erie, it was a munitions plant, that's a, that's the center of Pocatello.
That's the, that's the first.
Well, a center.
A center.
That's the center, that's not the center of Pocatello, I would disagree with that, but that is a big landmark.
It's a center, but it's very much a part of our history.
Oh, okay. And what is it exactly?
It's huge.
Huge.
It used to be a World War II munitions factory, but now it's being repurposed for events and activities.
Okay, excellent.
And all kinds of industrial businesses in there, really.
Where is it?
So, let's see.
Bye.
So.
I don't think we.
Costco.
Your Smoke Stack, it's north of the Smoke Stack.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on the right side.
Because Yellowstone turns.
No, actually, it is on the left side of the, it's on the left side of the tracks.
Yes.
Oh, well, the tracks don't.
It is on the left.
It's on the left side of the tracks.
The tracks go through it.
Tracks run through it, yeah. It's on both sides of the tracks.
The building goes through it, so.
Oh, alright.
A building goes through it, like the moon.
Yeah, Yellowstone swings left there and.
Yellowstone is the business route of I-15.
So right by.
Not yet, FBI, there's an FBI center.
So right by the Titan Center that you just built, or built right there, we have an FBI center just to the, just right there in the same location.
Same area?
Yeah.
Do we need to put Yellowstone on there?
Well, Yellowstone says, yes, so yeah, let's put Yellowstone.
I would think so.
Yellowstone, that's right.
On the east side, Yellowstone, and on the west side, Main Street.
So.
It's parallel down here, but then it turns.
Alright, so start at the bottom. You're going to be on the left side of the freeway and you're gonna follow the railroad tracks straight up, keep going up.
Starting at the connector?
Yeah, that's good enough.
Okay.
And then follow, straight up, right of the tracks, you're good, keep going.
Warehouse district?
No, just to the right of the warehouse district.
Okay.
Keep going, straight, 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 right there at the Titan Center, you're gonna, keep going, and just above the Titan Center, turn left.
Sharp.
Sharp left, yes.
No, it's a lot.
Right, left, sharp left, and then right again. Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it cross the river?
No.
Does it, I-86?
It goes under 86.
Under 86, it keeps going?
Actually, yeah.
But you have quite a lot that goes.
We got a lot right there.
And this is Yellowstone?
Yellowstone.
I know.
That's the truth. Everything's right there. It's kind of the city though, in the bottom of the valley, it's kind of how it is.
It's a little wonky, but.
If Brian was gonna draw a star on the heart of Pocatello, where would the star go on this map?
Historic downtown.
Historic downtown.
Historic downtown.
Any other?
What are you thinking?
I would say ISU.
ISU is the heart?
ISU for the center, so then I was like, well, what's the heart? I like downtown or ISU.
Okay.
We got ISU and we got downtown.
I said outdoor rec, but you can't really put it on just that, like, we have so much outdoor.
Ruth, what do you think?
Like, all the.
See, that's the heart of like Pocatello, all the ability to recreate.
Yeah.
But that's everywhere.
Ruth, what do you think, the heart?
Yeah.
Where's the heart?
Yeah.
But it is.
Old Town?
So, the Old Town is the heart, Heather?
Yeah, I would go. I gotta think on it. She's saying we're missing all the shopping in north, but it's kind of right on the border.
That's in, yeah, that's, that's, a lot of that shopping's in Chubbick though, so.
And we're missing one of our high schools.
And we're missing a high school.
We don't have Highland High School on there.
Highland High School by that, it's right by that golf course on the northern, yep.
Yep, because that's Highland Golf Course, so it's right up next to it.
Okay.
What, where's our heart? Where?
Where are these guys saying is at?
Well, they don't know, that's, you say wherever, they, they have a clue where it is.
I'm following them.
Okay.
Sounds like you're the heart.
How do you know you've arrived in Pocatello? You have arrived in our city when you have survived a few winters.
What does our staff say over there? What's the heart of Pocatello?
Do you, downtown? Heart of the city?
Yeah, it represents where.
Tom, could you pay attention? Can you pay attention?
I think it is.
I noticed that, yeah.
Yeah, the airport's.
Out 86.
It's, yeah, it's out 86.
Sounds like the heart is between downtown and ISU.
And ISU. And then, when you get into the center, is that different than the heart, the center of town?
I would say that ISU kind of represents the community heart. The downtown district would be more of the central location.
It is the central.
But I don't see that as our heart.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
But I don't even see that as our center.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I guess, are you looking for the actual center?
No, if you, if you think center, where's the center? If you say, I will meet you at the center of the city, where is it?
But it doesn't have to be literal.
Oh my god, not literal.
That's so literal.
Like in terms of congregation or center, where, where the people show up would be essentially downtown. That's where we host our parades, that's where we have our, our blocks. The farmers market. The community congregation.
Yeah.
Congregate, excellent. And it's up and coming.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So it sounds like downtown, put the star by our downtown area. Brent, you had something though.
You got it?
Okay.
Alright, so, how do you know if I'm driving in from any direction, you've arrived? I totally take your answer though. So, say we're coming from the south, well, how do you know you've arrived? ISU, through the. Through the gap?
Through the gap.
You know, you, so if you have someone coming from out of town visiting you, once you've gone through the gap, welcome to Pocatello. If you're coming from the north, coming down from the north, once you.
North Gate. See the temple.
The temple? So as you come over the, over the mountains, that's their arrival.
But you're right, probably the temple is the first thing.
But you see the temple.
Because it's up on the hill, and North Gate is there, it's a, um, there's a new, literally a new exit.
Just.
Off of the highway, so that's now the first exit coming from the north.
Excellent. Excellent.
So, but the temple visually.
Temple visually, okay. And if you're coming in from, say you're coming from the east, heading west. Airport.
If you're, that east, east-west is, you're gonna be on I-15 South, so west to east. Simplot, airport, Simplot.
And you're gonna see that other city.
We're going J.K. Rowling again, don't say the name. Never say the name, yes, I get it.
We call it the city to the north.
The city to the north. Alright, are there other sensory clues when you come in?
I like the sound of the railroad.
Sound of the railroad.
The crashing of the cars. I actually really like that sound, and it's very, I identify it with Pocatello very much.
The railroad, train horns?
But, but a smell as you're coming in from the west is Simplot.
It's gotten better, okay.
It has gotten better, no, we don't want to be known for that.
But you can, yeah, yep, in the back. So, when you drop down, so that, like, loss of elevation? Or descent? Is that sort of like a?
You are seeing all of the mountains.
We're, we're in the mountains, yeah.
Visually, you're seeing it, but you're not, like, you're not gonna be coming down.
Yeah.
It's a feeling of opening up.
Yeah, okay, feeling of opening up.
For me, what I hear the most is when you come in through the gap, when you come down north, you come into a valley, right? And you're bisecting right to the middle of that valley, and if you're driving through on a nice summer day, the whole community is covered in trees. It's, it's a very beautiful town, right?
And in the winter, all covered in snow, and also beautiful.
Okay. Alright. Anything else on mapping? We have about five minutes, maybe.
I think one of our most beautiful spots in this whole city, when I first came to Pocatello, I was blown away, is our cemetery. Mountain View Cemetery on Fifth Street, and it's just incredibly beautiful, and all trees, and, um, I just love that, to me, that's one of the gems of our city.
There's a lot of history in that cemetery, too.
Yes. A lot of history there, ooh. From the railroad and.
Railroad, the Asian people, the paint and all that.
Very diverse, when you look at the.
At the headstones?
It's literally just south of ISU. One thing I don't think we mentioned was whether you're driving north or south, but on Red Hill, the pillars, that's pretty iconic.
And that's.
Pillars on Red Hill, yeah.
ISU, but that's the, the symbol we associate, yeah, yeah.
Now, I forgot, I was hold, I'm supposed to hold 15 minutes for you at the end, right?
We're supposed to, but we've got good communication going, I think.
Okay, because I don't want to, we had one other little activity we could do, but we can also pause right there, and we have plenty of other questions, and we'll be moving around. I lost, lost control. Sorry. No, no, you're good, you're good.
You made it to Pocatello.
I made it. Okay, so, one last activity, we know you have a zoo here, uh, and we wanna, we've been spending a lot of time talking about Pocatello, but we're gonna pull back out a little bit, and we're gonna kind of play with metaphor. So, if you had to choose an animal at the zoo for Pocatello, but also the other cities in Idaho, now, you think about the different animals that are at the zoo, please do not choose the one that you see the most, choose based on characteristics or reputation. So, in our zoo, who has an animal for Pocatello? Or we could start with another Idaho city, you can start with Boise if you want?
Toilet.
Our zoo's gonna be unique, it's all.
It is.
It's native rescue.
Native rescue animals, there's no exotics.
Oh, yes, so just give me characteristic. Mountain, is, is somebody, is, is there a mountain lion?
Yes.
We heard mountain lion, what did you say?
I didn't think that, I said, not really our zoo, I thought you were just talking about house in general.
Well, I was, I was trying to pull the parallel to this zoo, but if we want to go exotic animals, we can do that. Or if you want to go here, I just don't, sometimes it's like, well, we have a lot of deer here, so we're a deer, and I'm like, oh, so you're, you know, sort of that animal that everyone's like, get out of my garden.
We have bears.
Elk.
Elk, we got.
So, what about the elk?
Mountain lion, elk.
Bear.
Bear. Are these all Pocatello?
They're all in the zoo.
Right.
That's what they're thinking, the Pocatello, so, so Ruth, an elk, why an elk?
Well, they're majestic, and they throw their antlers, and they fall off, and Pocatello's kind of in that way, raised up, kinda, and then things are kind of falling apart, but raised up again, and they are, they're noisy.
They're noisy.
They're in a community, they're community animals?
Yeah, they don't find love, I mean, it's very, so that's more of a community.
Okay.
Alright.
So, if we've established the elk as Pocatello.
Is that?
I like that, we have an active Elks Lodge, too, so I like that symbol.
So, what animal would Chubbick be?
Let's go.
I'm not writing that down, I really, yeah, I am.
I was thinking about it for a while.
Uh, let's go Idaho Falls.
A badger.
Badger, penguin, why about white penguin?
Their topaz zoo has penguins, and I want to go look out.
Yes, thank you, Ann.
Yeah. Alright. Penguins, I could see that.
Yeah, there we go, that's a good one.
What's the characteristic of this?
I would recognize Idaho Falls as an eagle.
As an eagle?
Yes, they did, used to be called Eagle Rock, actually.
I heard peacock, I like peacock.
Peacock is a good one for.
Peacock back there, white peacock.
Yeah.
Bryan Falls, um.
Strut around.
It actually is recorded.
I'm just flashiness, you know, strut.
I think, that's probably closer to Idaho Falls, the kind of.
I can see that.
Boise?
Badger.
Badger.
Badger. And mean.
Our badger zoo, like, she's just, like, loud. She's just, like, loud and ran buck, she's, she's, like, she wants the attention, like, she will do anything, she's getting the attention, and I think Boise's kind of like.
That's Boise.
Here, like, Boise State is always just like, look at me, we're here.
ISU's the redheaded stepchild, Boise's the one that always gets all the funding, and, yeah.
I can see Boise as a chihuahua.
Boise as a chihuahua.
Small, they think they're huge and tough, and yapping and loud all the time, and the one you just want to kick.
It isn't really a zoo animal, though.
But I'll take it, I'll take it.
I guess you can grab a chihuahua and throw it in a crate and put it in the zoo, but.
I do like badger, I think that fits.
Badger is good, yeah. Okay, so we have a black bear in the zoo, it says, is there a black bear, there's two?
Oh, alright.
Yeah, we've got a grizzly.
So, is there, is there any grizzly bear or black bear in Idaho, who's, what city is that?
That's Montana.
That's Montana?
Heather?
There's grizzly in Island Park, I mean, it's in Idaho, it's not Pocatello.
Do they have that characteristic, though? Like, if you think about what a bear is, no, not that much.
Can I say Caldwell?
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 Can I say Caldwell's kind of a bear?
Okay.
Grizzly's on the middle fork.
Not because there's grizzly bears that are in Caldwell, but it's just a rough city.
Yes. How do you really feel, Corey?
We don't poke the bear.
I apologize, all over the state now, as I go around.
I think we've poked a bear.
Yeah, I know, right?
Sorry. Sorry, Caldwell.
Alright, I think that leaves us with five minutes.
Can I just ask Rick, any, anything that you have, Rick, we've.
Well, I, when you talk about characteristics of city, I think if you're gonna put an animal on Boise, it would be the Canadian goose. I've been walking goose crap every morning at the Capitol. And if I look at a, at an animal characteristic of Pocatello, I think it has to be a mule deer.
Mule deer.
With 600 resident animals in the city, I think that has to be our beastie.
Mule deer.
We've got, we've got special turkey hunts going on, because we've got too many turkeys, too, so.
I don't know if I dare.
You don't want to be known as a Pocatello turkeys.
No. Okay. Anything else?
I also considered rockchucks, but.
We did hear a rockchuck earlier in the week, yeah, yeah. What about cats, Rick?
Yeah, yeah.
We did have some mountain lions roaming the neighborhood.
The other meat.
Alright. Well, did anybody else have anything that they came here to share with us tonight that did not come up in the past 50 minutes?
Yeah, I have something, actually.
So, when you're done.
I'm done.
Then I will, we're gonna go a little bit past seven, but I think it's important because we needed to get some input, but we have four people that have signed up to, to say something. Heather Diselkun, you've got another topic, so can I skip you and put you at the end? Okay, so Marty, why don't we start with you, and then Lydia, and then Ruby?
My name is Marty Viscara, I'm a resident here in the city of Pocatello. I want to kind of talk a little bit about my experience here. I originally grew up in Idaho Falls, I'd lived there until I was about 23, I've been in Pocatello for about 11, 12 years. Growing up, I will say that Pocatello did not always have the best reputation, and I still believe to some extent that has persisted. The thing that I can say from my own experience in living here for over 10 years now is that it is the biggest misconception of I, I have ever understood. I will absolutely say and be honest that Pocatello has rough moments, I think any city, any community would, but I believe that the city of Pocatello and its community members are some of the most caring, compassionate individuals I have ever met. We have a tendency to rally around each other quite a bit, Idaho State University being a perfect example of that. We really strive to help our neighbors, and if there's anything that I think exemplifies Pocatello, it is the, the pride of the community at large. I will not lie, I expected there to be a lot of animosity here tonight, to be entirely honest, and I am pleasantly surprised to see that, for better or worse, we all kind of love this place, so. No, it's true, I, I genuinely believe that, that like, we have, we're rough around the edges, this kind of, it's an eclectic, diverse kind of place, and I think that's what makes us unique, is that we are, we're a little different, but we all kind of like it that way, so. Anyways, that's, thank you for your time on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Marty, thank you, Lydia.
Lydia Noble, also a resident here of Pocatello, um, not to be negative, but rebranding, from what I've researched, is often done when there's a major change in a community, such as if a community sees an influx of a particular kind of an industry, and so they choose to say, whoa, our community is changing, we're having some things going on that are gonna make us want to change how we're gonna promote ourselves. That's the instance what I'm familiar with when rebranding is appropriate, or when it's justified. So, in the case of Pocatello, I'm not seeing a major change, I, I agree, it's a great community, it is a little rough around the edges, but I do enjoy it, but I'm not seeing anything majorly changing. So, a large expenditure of money on rebranding might just be a hope that rebranding is going to drive economic development, and I'm not really convinced that that's what rebranding is all about, but that's what I've heard from the council, is that in some ways, this is going to drive economic development. So, in that line, I don't think the city has shared with us their plan, I'm certain they wouldn't have approached this project without a plan, and that plan should involve both a budget and a plan. So, I'm very interested in knowing what, how many years is rebranding gonna take to accomplish, and at what total cost, including all of the signage changes, the letterhead changes, all of the vehicles that have to be modified for logos if that's gonna be a part of it? That's a huge cost in my mind, and how long is all that gonna take, and at what cost? And then, how is the rebranding cost being paid for? Is this gonna be property taxes? Is it going to be state revenue coming in to help with that? Are we getting grants? Or are we gonna use city savings? How are we gonna pay for this? Those are my questions that I don't think the city has thoroughly shared with the community. So, that's my concern about rebranding, thank you.
Thank you, Ruby.
My name is Ruby Walsh, I sell Pocatello often, I am a Realtor, and I give a community tour, we hit a lot of the highlights, but I think our, our outdoor rec is superior. You can literally walk out your house and within a few minutes be on a trail somewhere. If you want to drive a little further, and where our location is, you have Yellowstone-Jackson, you have Salmon, you have Frank Church, and then, so you have a lot of good areas to do hunting, camping, fishing, hiking, rafting, skiing, whatever your outdoor activity of choice is. I do believe in rebranding, I think we've experienced enough growth. I sat on the ISU alumni board for six years, and we'd get all these updates, and I'd be like, ISU is doing all these good things, we're not telling our story. We got a new president, they added a couple zeros to that marketing budget, and now everybody in the state knows we roar, and they know how well ISU is doing, and they have seen an increase in enrollment numbers, so I think it is important to tell our story. I think Pocatello is a hidden gem. I grew up in a big city, so that's why I'm like, we're very slow paced, but for years, I was like, man, this is a great little town, and then I felt it coming in about 2017, and I said, oh boy, it's coming, and we're not ready, and then it came, and now the secret is out, and so I think I am in support of rebranding, because we have had a lot of growth, and I think it's time we tell our story in a positive way. Yes, the city can be rough around the edges, there are a lot of negative things, but you guys, there is so much good happening in this town, too, and I think it's important to focus on that. I think that hit all my points, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, now, Heather Diselkun, you said you have a other topic.
If you permit me, I'd like to pivot and save that topic for tomorrow, but I still.
That's up to you.
Is that okay? So, I don't have anything prepared, but I just, I've really enjoyed tonight, and I thank you, I think the interaction is very healthy and very encouraging. One thing that I would just want to communicate to you is, there, there are a lot of families and people in Pocatello that have lived here forever, generations, but then there's people like me. I've now lived here 20, going on 21 years. I didn't have the benefit of having a hometown when I grew up, I went to four different elementary schools. Luckily, I had some stability from about age 11 until when I graduated, I lived in one location for about seven years, and then after that, did some moving around. Before I moved here, I'd only, where, if you combine the years, I'd only lived one location 13 years. This is my hometown, I chose Pocatello, I chose to bring my young children here when they were three and five, and raise them here. There are, there are people like me that have chosen to live here, and chose to stay here, and I love Pocatello, and I'm passionate about it, so that's just something I wanted to share with the branding team, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If I may.
Sure.
I think that, I echo part of Marty's sentiments, I, I expected there to partially, possibly be some rough environment tonight, because some people are for the, the rebranding, some people are not for the rebranding, but I believe that everyone who's here, and who's attended, and everybody who's voiced their opinions, I think that everybody has a care for the city of Pocatello, and everybody wants to see the city explode with growth, and it may, it might not be numbers, it might not be economic development, but we just want to see the best for the city of Pocatello, and I just want to commend everybody for their attitudes here in this, in this room, that we're in support of one another, we're able to laugh with one another, joke with one another, make fun of other cities, that was more me, but make fun of other cities together, and it just really shows that we're in support of one another, and not just one person's ideas being pushed, but the, the idea that this city can thrive, will thrive, and will go to the next level, so I just want to commend everybody and say thank you so much for being here, and like you, Heather, I chose to, to raise seven kids here in this city, and I want this to be a place where my kids feel safe, where they feel heard, where they feel included, and where they feel like this is home, and a place where they feel like everybody here will look out for one another, and so, at that, just thank you.
Yes.
I would echo a lot of what Corey just said, except maybe the explosive growth part, that makes me a little nervous, but, but I agree totally that we all, in our own ways, want the best for Pocatello, and that's why everybody's here, and so, I think tonight has been wonderful, this kind of interaction and dialogue has been really good, like Heather and like Corey, I also chose to be here. I came here to be at ISU, and then chose to stay, even though I'm not at ISU anymore, so this is where I see myself staying for the rest of my life, so I think there are many people who've lived here their whole lives, and, and they understand how good it is, but there's also many of us who move here and, and love it, and choose to make this our home, so there's, you know, both sides of that, and I think the more people we can hear from, I, I would have liked to see more people here tonight, but we have these other open houses that you're gonna have, and you're gonna reach out to other groups and other people, and so the more that all of us can encourage anyone that you know that wasn't here tonight, and maybe couldn't be here tonight, let's try to get more people at these other open houses, because this input is exactly what we want. It's not, you know, the six, seven people that sit up here saying what our city is, it's the whole community saying what our city is, so I think we really, we want to encourage that, and we want to hear from people. That's gonna make this work, yeah, so thank you, and thank you all.
Okay.
Ms. Lydia, I appreciate your concerns also, I don't, I, we're not running blind and just throwing stuff around, but I appreciate your concerns, because it does bring that to the forefront, and so, thank you for, for that.
Okay, then, we are, we went seven minutes past, by the time we're done, we'll probably be eight minutes, and I apologize for that eight minute, but thank you very much for being here. I just want to remind you, once again, there will be an open house tomorrow, on March 8th, Friday, March 8th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the library. There will be community input Saturday, March 9th, from 8:00 to 10:00 at Franklin Middle School, and there will be community input at the Elks Lodge on Saturday, March, March 9th, from 1:00 PM to 2:30, and so, please inform your friends, let everybody that you know know, because we really, truly do want to get as much public input as we can get